I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, would you please give us some...
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the precious weather that we had over the course of the last few days. All those that you give us that are nice now are one less that we have to endure. And we thank you for that. We just pray you watch over the business at hand tonight, that you can guide us in our decisions, that they are suitable for those in need, sir. In your name we pray.
Alright, reading the minutes for the January twentieth meeting?
Motion to approve the suspended meeting.
Motion by Wolf. Second, second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Any additions or changes?
Big motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Hiller.
Second.
And second by that. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Five eight, engineers report annexation task order. And you guys all have a copy of that. We are not, the engineers are not going to be here tonight.
Jared is available by phone if there are questions. Basically, they did up the task order to our general engineering agreement to cover the preparation of the annexation flats, not to exceed forty-five hundred dollars. And as you can see, they do have those flats done based on the decision at the previous meetings. Meetings.
So that allows them to then move forward with the individual project submittals?
For the NB Streets program.
Okay. And so, and they knew that that was the direction that they were going, so they're working toward that?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yeah. They have already notified the DOT engineer that the application's being updated to include these areas. If they are annexed, I guess, if it's approved tonight, the resolution to annex, then we'll send out the notices and publish and do all those steps.
Okay. This is all, there's nothing new that we have to cover yet.
Yeah, this is just those right-of-way areas. It doesn't include anything extra.
So is this the time that we would be looking at that annexation? Do we have that someplace?
No, this would be the time for that as well.
And then there's three separate ones here.
There's three separate flats. I don't know how to see on the screen.
Just to double-check or clarify, those are all DOT right-of-ways, right?
Yeah.
So it's annexation for right-of-way to allow us to do these projects, but we are still not the owners of these lands, right?
Correct.
So then is there any other plans in, what other areas in town? Maybe we'll help, help to pay, pay in the fire truck because of the people involved? Yes. But what are they, I guess, or we, not in this, not in this particular area? I guess I don't know how to answer that, Casey. We've all talked about it and we've just not made any motions to make the move on it, so it's...
Why don't we put it on, put it on the next agenda and have the drawings again available? Send those out ahead of time so that we can have opportunity to review those prior to the meeting? And then we can have discussions on it and make a decision how we want to move forward at that time? Does that work?
The next, you won't be at the next meeting? So let's not have that on the, I'm gonna make sure, Wolf.
Yep. And unfortunately Jared wouldn't be there for that next meeting either.
That's March one?
It's March second.
Probably, yeah.
But I agree, let's wait for where we've got everybody that's involved on that. So that takes us then to the sixteenth meeting?
Five.
I just want to understand, does that for, is that for this?
No.
Oh, just for additional?
For the additional ones said that we thought, well, we knew would require more conversation and involvement with citizens and stuff like that. But these were no brainers and we wanted to get going on the projects.
And then the second question would be, is this work proposal for the work that's already been done here? For them establishing these relationships?
Yes.
Yeah, at least structures?
That's what we're talking about tonight, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they were approved at the last meeting, opposed to the annexed these areas and prepare the flats.
Okay.
It's kind of...
So if we want to move forward with these three files, we need to have the motions proceed?
I guess the first thing would be to approve their task order and get through the intent.
So moved.
Yeah, a motion by Wolf. Second, second by that. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hobenour.
Aye.
So now let's go to five eight point two. Let's just talk about that a little bit more for the next meeting. So we're talking of the areas.
Are we still?
We're still there.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're not done with, we're not done with.
We're still annexations.
That was just passport.
So the next step in the annexation is then just doing the legal filings and everything like that for...
Publication is next?
Approving hearing after March sixteenth.
Yeah. You basically have to approve the resolution tonight so that we can do the hearings. I didn't, I've got the, it's forty-six point five one seven acres total for this right of... That's being proposed here. I didn't put it into the thing here yet.
So we just have to make a motion or approve the resolution tonight?
Yep.
So moved. And what's my pillar?
Second.
Second by that. Discussion. Rock call.
Hiller.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hobenour.
Aye. Kerry, thank you. Good, Marty?
We're good now.
So this, this before we move on, I would be, um, engineering discussion. Let's talk briefly about the March meeting. So the areas that we're looking at are still the Meisner property?
Those blue areas on that map that we had the last.
Yeah, yeah.
And to add much to Meisner property.
Okay. So the Meisner, Gowan.
Isn't that one over?
Airport or?
Isn't that up in Dover?
All the yellow highlighted areas. Which, which, which one is, by the, I was going to go to Old Axeman, make a garage.
You see that one there, that, was it a full lot or a half lot up there?
Yeah, yeah. I want to move this right there. Hobenour more. Someplace near.
Jerry?
Yes, Buster?
Do you think there'd be consideration looking at maybe doing this annexing the golf course?
If we could, that'd be, that'd be...
Wasn't there some, some concerns on that because it wasn't contiguous from, from city limits to the, the land that the golf course rests on? And that made it either a challenge or impossible to annex in?
Yeah. Yeah. So it depends on what else you want to have.
So you, we would, we would have to annex everything up to that to be able to then in turn annex the golf course into the city, so I don't know.
I thought at that time, I guess, it was also, I guess, like brought up about just the bike path. Annex even that strip manor? Yeah. Just a bike path that leads up to the golf course, so.
So, so Pat, if you annex that, that path?
I don't want to answer your question.
You know where it was on there.
Whether that creates a contiguous relationship?
I don't know.
Because if we could, I'd like to see if we could annex the golf course in the back.
Well, and then, you know, I know that this might be a stretch, but maybe you're going through the process. What about the properties that are on the other side of the highway? Millers and whoever else is there?
Yeah. They use, they use our...
I, you know, I, you know, again, I'm not sure what their reception to it would be, but it would seem to me that being you're looking at annexing quite a few different areas.
But if you're annexing, do we have to then apply law in the sewer? If they self-request it, if they're part of our annexation, or can they opt out of it?
Well, they can require you, the city to put again, obviously that's a decision the city would make. But if fifty percent of the property owners, that for square footage protests, it can be protested out and then if the city is doing it, you would have to go to arbitration and other, other ways of resolving.
And that's, and that's dependent on how you define the, the space. If you've got all these little annexations, it's fifty percent or more of whoever owns that space?
The square footage, the square footage of the total.
Okay.
Is my understanding. Has to be at least fifty point whatever percent of the property being annexed, not of the number of owners.
To do it, I think what you're asking is if you break it into separate annexations, like parcel-wise annexation, parcel two.
Because that's what we did here. I mean, they weren't connected, so we were forced to do that.
Three separate annexations essentially.
Then it would be?
Three protests, I mean, to get out.
Yeah. And, and clearly the benefit to the city is you, you, you get some increased revenue and one could argue, I think, that these particular areas of the city have been receiving the benefit of city services for some time.
They pay taxes now, it goes to the county. In my opinion, we provide more service to these people than the county does, right?
South of the highway out there, we provide no service.
Nuts.
East?
East and south of the highway.
I'm saying we do garbage. We have our fire protection service, you know, police. Right, but who's, who's going to go out there?
The rural, yeah.
Right. Police.
So it can be an interesting thing since they are out of city limits.
Sure.
So it has to be a definite.
Well, I guess I could argue that the city of Hazen takes care of those areas as much as anybody else does, if not more.
So the other question that will be asked if you decide to go forward with that is what is their benefit?
That's, that's what I'm looking for, I, you know, I...
Why, why would they want to be annexed into our community?
I would, I would like this to be a win-win.
Right. And also that's my question. If, if you're talking about, what is there, like, three or four farms out, or houses out there? What is their benefit? Because they're gonna, they're gonna want to benefit too. And right now they're getting the services that you're talking about.
One, one benefit, like, and I don't know this, because I haven't researched it, I'm not sure about the tax base.
Oh.
I mean, that'd be the first thing that I'd want, you know?
That's a benefit to us, yeah.
Yeah. That's what I mean.
But it's not going to lower their taxes.
So would it, would it, what is it, more expensive if we annex them into the city? Are they paying more taxes?
Yes.
Sure? Than just, because they're not paying?
They pay city and park taxes then.
The park, yeah.
Yeah, they pay city and park taxes then.
Versus just county.
County, school, fire district.
But in addition to that, then on the flip side, you get the penny sales tax from the golf course. You would get the penny sales tax from the golf course, but you're not getting now because there is no such thing.
So I wonder what the, since we're talking about that, if there's Mercer County, the school, Mercer County tax versus city, is there a difference there or is it one higher than the other or?
Well, yeah, you just add the city and park mill levy into their property value and it's taxed.
Right, but then you take out Mercer County.
No, no, they still pay county and school fire tax.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And, and I guess, if I can, to Buster's point, it'd be nice to know what taxable sales would be out there. Because obviously the beverage tax goes to CVB.
CVB, yeah.
And they can use it too.
What would that do for snow removal in the winter?
No, we wouldn't.
Start plowing into them individual homes? Would that be considered in the streets, getting back to that section?
Pulse back in or is that all private property?
That's the rules and regulations.
That would be on the road, wouldn't it?
No, that one too. Right.
I mean, those are the questions that we need.
We're having to plow their roads and that's...
These are questions we need to have answered before you decide that you're going to go ahead with it and get surveys done and, you know, is there a benefit to them? Is there a benefit that's going to really help our community? And also they're going to want to know what their benefit is because I wouldn't want to be annexed and if there was really no benefit to me either. And then also, yeah, is it going to tax our, our street guys a little bit more? You know, things we need to look at before we decide to go forward with this.
You know, on the water and sewer part, you know, if you look at Elbow Woods, I guess, up on the water tower, you know, I mean, for many years, there was no, there was no, there was no, I guess, like, water. Or I guess, you know, I guess sewer up there, you know, and that was in the city. So I mean, I don't think that's a, made the break deal. Well, there's things to consider and question being answered.
No.
I mean, I think it would be fairly easy, probably on orders, but I think it would be fairly easy to calculate what kind of revenue they would break to the city.
Well, and I'd like to have calculated what you, what we're gonna, what burden they're gonna have to add it onto them.
Yeah.
You know, there's the two houses right across from the railroad tracks, and there's Silas', and there's Chris Miller's, and then, uh, there's Hides'.
And then that Gary.
Gary Vanels, they rolled back in there.
His, I don't know if he lives there, but his, that's his shop.
Two shops. I mean, there's, it's clear the value to the, to the city in terms of increased taxation and stuff like that, but... Like I said, I'd like to see some benefit, and I'm not sure what it is just yet for, for any of those individual landowners.
Well, well, the same thing on the other side of the railroad tracks, also. You know, they, they don't have paper roads, uh, they have streets. Dave, do we always plow out there on railroad?
It seems like we get split sometimes between us and the county, or we're like, sometimes they bladed or managed, I guess, we do, or try to.
Snow and just regular maintenance of summer.
Yeah, we bladed sometimes snow, but there's sometimes we go down and we blade it, and the county has gone through, so it's kind of...
And that's all septic and well out there, they have Southwest.
Southwest, Southwest.
Southwest services there, but there's septic's.
Which is another.
I don't think all of them have their own west down.
What, Dave?
I don't think Southwest is down, like, microgram stuff, I don't think.
I know Clyde was working together.
But they should have.
And there might, and it might stop there.
Do your services.
And there's a couple down there, they're not all.
That never went forward.
Alright, I gotta stop, sorry. Alright, let's move down to six eight, local, local permit, raffle permit, fifty-fifty for season youth wrestling.
We're actually looking at a couple events right now. They're talking about fifty-fifty raffle during their tournament on March twenty-first, but they are considering another regular ticket raffle.
So then they would request that at that time?
No, this first is good for the year.
Okay.
I just told them.
Dave, that motion by Wolf?
Second.
Second by Stern, what was that, Marty? Discussion?
I just told him if they do a, if Paul wanted to just let us know the dates so I can keep you informed.
Dave, we have a motion and second. And then discussion, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Thank you. Alright, down to report, water sewer.
We have an update now on the, on the garbage truck.
Should we, I'm gonna give them a call at the end of the week because they said they were gonna take delivery, I have it somewhere on the tenth of the eleventh. So I'm gonna check to make sure that it does show up on the page.
So we're getting very close on that. It's gonna wind up to the port at this time.
So it's, uh, we're using Beelze truck?
Yeah, I'm doing some brake work and whichever developing exhaust leak done by the turbo under the hood. So I'm working on that, I started on that today, so I'm gonna use Beelze spare copper for a few days.
What's the update on the water break or the main work out over at Shannon's?
Uh, talked to Ryan and they put in a new curb stop and, uh, the main is actually up in the boulevards. So they changed that out and put poly on, so that'll be copper yet from the curb stop to the house.
Did they have to relocate the curb stop or not?
Yeah, they moved the curb stop out of the sidewalk and then into the grass area after that, picked the sidewalk up, that's where it was cemented in. I suppose at a later date Shannon will go from the curb stop to a house, I don't know, Shannon Plumber there, doing some work in the basement, changing out whatever the road, whatever the bad section was.
Thank you. Streets, cemetery.
Well, other than I don't really follow, we, we didn't scratch it all, it was nice, but I know there's probably people out there wondering after it's odd and frozen.
Yeah, they're off, they're off today scraping some intersections, you know, cleaning out the boulevards or the drainage areas and carving along curb and other trying to get water to flow the best we can. It's freestyle, freestyle, it's just kind of an odd.
Right.
As it softens up, we get out the street, but we're probably doing that all day tomorrow, getting intersections the best we can. Trying to get water along, along the curb lines.
Be easier because it's forty-five again.
And then save for a few days or overnight, you know, get it flowing, stay flowing.
We've been lucky, they should have put a jetway.
I bet.
That's all I have.
Okay, finance, busting, better day than next time. Okay. Police, fire, horse.
Nothing at this time.
Buster, CB.
Other than getting reported on our annual meeting, you know, we got the twenty-second, I thought it worked really well. Wade DeSantis did a nice job, I think, with this carpet capture, Project Tundra. And we had a nice turnout, so I was, I was pleased with, with the whole, the whole weekend, so it went well.
Excellent.
Pardon me?
Excellent, true.
Yeah, it was, it was very good. Yeah.
Thank you. And along with Wade's top, topic, we have, he wrote the paper yesterday, North Dakota coal production's down eight percent, which automatically equates to coal service and conversion being down. So it's a trend we need to keep an eye on. Actually, today I spoke to all seventh graders in the middle school of our city government, and one seventh grade boy mentioned that. So I, I, my dad said coal, coal is down. I was pretty impressed that he remembered it or even listened to his dad and brought it up today.
That may be part of the motivation or the win-win on maybe annexation discussion. Some more contributions to the, to the kitty to support the activities of the city that everybody gets to enjoy.
And the biggest, the biggest complaint that kids hear from their parents is snore. Alright, down to ten A. Are Marty?
Rats and Mayor did collect all the information they are working on here on it. This letter just basically states, we're not aware that we're being sued, we follow, we follow the rules of the government accounting standards. Basically, just kind of cover all that we've provided them all the information they requested. Hope they can continue to, and complete their audit.
So this is just to provide feedback to say we've, we've received this from you, continue?
Basically, yeah. The main crux of this is that we're not aware of any litigation or any of those types of things.
We're answering their questions, saying that, okay. So do we need to answer, do we need to say that we're, we're in a favor of signing it?
Since it requires a signature period of.
I make motion to direct Marty and Jerry to sign this on behalf of the city.
Same motion by Hiller. Second, second by Stern, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Thank you. No old business on here. Alright, twelve A, sales tax. So this is for Park Board wants to put this on our ballot?
Yeah, I just worked this up, that's the request of the Park Board. They would like to, if you want to have two of you meet with two of their representatives to discuss this some more before we move forward on it, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention again that they are interested in maintaining that half percent sales tax for their loans and improvements.
Now, I saw, are they looking at it as, as a supplement to their existing budget to be able to go after some of these different items? Because I saw some discussion that we as a city then may make a determination that when it comes budget time, whether we, we allocate monies that have once gone or are currently going to the Park Board for other needs if this is something that the, the citizens were to approve.
And that's the way they're, they would like to continue with all the money, but
Sure.
they have obviously been informed that the budget may be affected by them continuing to collect sales taxes and what the city's providing.
So I guess I, I went back, I just, I guess, just, I guess, I thought the minutes here. Yeah, I guess, in any way, you know... Yeah, I guess, in any way, you know, on that boat, back, I guess, thirteen, that was, that was, I guess, like just to pay off the debt of the, this.
The pool, right?
Remodeling, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's still, and I said, paying on that debt?
Yes. Their loan continues to, yeah.
So then, so then is their loan going to be paid off in then like three more years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, this sun sets in twenty twenty-three, whether the loan is paid or not, but they're, right now they're not scheduled to pay off the loan, yeah.
Yeah, because it says in here that we meant the loan is paid off early, but then it would be gone. And that if, and that this money is not supposed to be used for, for, I guess, anything else, but just to pay that loan.
Right, it's, it's strictly for that loan, but the, the discussion in the meeting and the actual resolution that was published just put the sunset in there of ten years, so it wasn't directly tied to when the loan is paid, so it just basically sunsets at ten years.
I can show this to you.
Yeah. But yeah, they're, they are on track to pay off within those timeframes. And they, they could have waited till twenty twenty-two, but thought they'd be better off to address it now, when there's all these budget concerns, and they are looking at getting estimates for replacing equipment at the various parks that are out of compliance, basically.
Marty was one of the other issues, the liner for the pool, is the life of that liner they purchased about ten to twelve year, right?
I don't know if that had any bearing on it, it was more to do with the loan that they had gotten to do those renovations.
Okay, so we don't need to take any action on this, other than they would like to.
Yeah, unless you want to, if you want to. And then I can coordinate a meeting with two of their members as well, they need, they meet on Mondays, so we can talk about it.
I'd be happy to sit in. Unless somebody else really wants to.
And I can, I could sit in too, unless somebody else wants to, but I'm not busy on Monday.
All right. Moving down, approval of bills. The only one I have a question on Dave, I see we have okay tires, four hundred ninety dollars, is that something we can't get here and count?
Let's recap tires for the truck.
Okay, all right, so we all go through the Senex or Highway Express or?
No, because that's the price that they would pay, well then they'd mark them off, so we just go direct. If I went to the hub of the Senex and ordered that tire, that's who they would buy it from.
That's just done recaps.
That's on the app.
You said it'll be done at City Hall tomorrow?
Yes, there's supposed to be there a string of new wires for the outputs tomorrow morning.
Motion approved.
Motion by Hack, second, second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Pat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hillary.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hobenour.
Aye, motion carried. Thirty minutes.